Is Erica? Apparently Erica was the last to use it. Alright, so apparently we are on. Now we just have to wait. They're doing something. It's classic. Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm unmuting. Okay.
We should introduce Russ. Guest appearance.
One minute. It's a time line. I got 6:59. Close enough?
Let me go and hit seven, get it to be official.
It's seven now.
Okay. Okay, it's seven o'clock this evening. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience participating tonight to the town of Duane'sbury Planning Board Meeting for May 20th, 2021. My name is Jeff Schmidt. I'm the chairperson of the planning board. And I think what we'll do as we did last time is we're just going to go around quickly and have the members identify themselves by name so you know a face and a name. So, Mike.
Mike Harris.
Tom Olson.
Josh Houghton.
Mike Santulli.
Mike Walpole.
And we have an alternate in the back now?
Now.
Okay, great. We also have tonight at the meeting the town planner and the building inspector Dale Warner and our town attorney Teresa Beckner. So, that's our side of the equation and we welcome everyone. Typically with these meetings, we have an agenda that's sent out way ahead of time. Hopefully everyone that wanted an agenda was able to get a copy there on the website. The meeting starts with the open forum, which is a time when anybody in the audience can petition the board, make statements to the board, discuss items with the board for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. If it's an agenda item, we would appreciate if you defer your comments until that portion of the meeting. The protocol for this is please identify yourself by name and address for the record. And that's kind of the ground rules for it. So, with that said, I'll make a motion to open the open forum for the May 20th, 2021 planning board meeting. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we're waiting to see if they're going to do this.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if anyone has something I'd like to discuss, feel free to speak up and we'll listen to you.
Good evening. This is Lynn Bruning at 13388 Duane'sburg Road. April 5th, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. April 15th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting Minutes were posted on the town website on May 19th. Open Meeting Law requires minutes be posted within 14 days. It appears the town is in violation of Open Meeting Law. At the April 15th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting, the town attorney walked the planning board through the changes in the draft solar law. Review of the draft solar law was not on the agenda and the document reviewed was not provided to the public. During the review of the law, the town attorney provided the definition of solar storage battery stating, quote, "This is not the big containers full of lithium batteries where they dump power in the substation in it. We're not talking about that. This is just the same stuff that was shown on Oak Hill plans which were approved by you all. All the storage was carefully noted on the plans that were approved," end quote. NYSERDA documents obtained through Freedom of Information include emails between NYSERDA and Eden Renewables, the developer, reflect that NYSERDA cannot find the 11,790 megawatt hours of battery energy storage per solar array mentioned in the approved resolution or negative declaration. Additionally, NYSERDA cannot locate the combined 23,580 megawatt hours of battery energy storage on the approved site plan. May 14th, 2021, Schenectady County Commissioner of Economic Development Ray Gillan confirmed with me that the county does not identify battery energy storage on the site plan as provided by the town to his office. He signed planning approval of the documents for Oak Hill Solar 1 and 2 on July 11th, 2019. April 2020, my attorney and I submitted a letter to the town that the projects approved resolution and site plan do not include battery energy storage. The town did not reply. I resubmitted this correspondence and supporting exhibits at the town in planning board meetings. As of today, the town has not replied to this correspondence. I request that this discrepancy between the town attorney's claim that battery energy storage is carefully noted on the site plan and the correspondence from NYSERDA, the county, my attorney and myself documenting that battery energy storage is not found on the site plan be resolved. The town documentation of battery energy storage on the site plan should be submitted to the record. Also, at the April 15th meeting, the town inspector and planner noted that Eden, that Oak Hill Solar has three changes to the plans. All three of these will significantly increase storm water pollution. And I request that all of these be calculated into the overall storm water pollution. The site is poorly drained. It is on a 10%, eight to 10% slope into my property. And I already have significant damage. And I will submit all of this in writing with my supporting documents for your review. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Lynn. Again, you are an expert at detailed comments to help us answer your questions, so that's good. Okay, is anyone else in the audience like to say anything? Hearing nothing from the audience, I make a motion to close the open forum. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. The second item on the agenda is public hearings and there are no public hearing scheduled for this evening. So, we'll move right to old business. There's three items under old business. The first is Sparrow Cagas who proposes accessory parking and applies for a special use permit. At the Wishy Wash Car Wash, we had a public hearing at our last meeting which was closed. We left some instructions for Mr. Cagas and his representatives for information that the board felt necessary to complete the process. We have received the information, but we didn't really have an opportunity to spend some time on it because we just got those documents. We didn't get them 10 days before the meeting, which is typically what we require. So, we can make some preliminary real quick comments on them. I had a chance to leaf through them quickly. Keep in mind, there are a number of very specific items that we asked to be shown on the plan for the parking lot. The attorney, Mr. Z, had provided a letter dated May 14th, which he identified those. I think the plan is a start. Really, we wanted a topographic map of the site showing the contour lines and what we had called is up gradient and down gradient drainage. I didn't see that on the plan. I saw maybe a downgrade one, but like I say, we just got these plans and I don't know if the message from the board and Mr. Z got to the engineer, but he did make some calculations. That is a very good start, but we're just going to need a little more detail and we can, as, we haven't really had time as a board or individually as members of the board to look at what has been submitted. So, we're going to need to move this forward to our next meeting where we could best, you know, decide on how the permit would be structured and if everything's approvable. But so far, so good. Looks like we've made a positive attempt at getting the board what they wanted. It's, you know, it looks good so far. Just some details.
Jeff, in May, I'm only Donald Gray. And I'm not sure if Brett Steenberg is on the phone online as well. But the map which Mr. Steenberg had delivered with his letter, I believe, does show the topography of the park though itself. And he has a, in his letter of May 3rd, talks about the proposed swell and the runoff and the size of the culverts. And those are the information that he had requested, I thought, at the last meeting. And also talked about the vegetation that he is proposing in the swell area. Brett, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. I'm not certain why of the plan you got up is just a part of the, just taking off Sims. Yeah, we did, we did do the, we showed the topography of the parking lot. It's just really, basically just drains down towards the site and it's going to be basically just, there isn't much in the way of grading that's going to be necessary because of the, because of the parking lot. It naturally drains to where we want it to. It's just going to be adding the crusher run, eight inches of crusher run on the fabric and creating that swell at the lower end of the parking area to divert the storm water, which right now is running off onto the neighboring property as it has for many years, which has always been part of the natural drainage course in that area. We're proposing to route that around into the existing swell along the driveway and into the roadside drainage so that there is not that runoff which the neighbor to the, to the south currently is receiving from, from the open fields behind his house. And that runoff will include the runoff from the parking lot. And we've provided calculations demonstrating that the proposed swell will be adequate to handle that additional runoff.
Is the sketch that you're referencing one that we, what's the date on that?
It was, would have been the one dropped off and it would have a swell detail on the left-hand side of the sketch.
We have one from March 30th. That has a swell. Is that the one you're referencing?
That's the one, yes. The date probably didn't get updated on the map. My apologies. I should have added a revision date. But you can see, you should be able to see the topography through the parking area there and along the edges of the pond and in the rear of his, of the car wash.
Brett, share the map.
Yes, I can. Give me one moment to create a PDF of it and I will.
What are we looking for additions? What to have here?
Just upgrading, the upgrade flow onto the pad so that would divert the flow actually before it got to the parking lot. As we had talked about that kind of extensively, run on and run off, run on to the pad and then run off. So, we talked about installing a trench at the, I guess would be the northern border and that would divert any kind of runoff either parking lot, the event that there was fluids or something in there that kind of washed through.
So, where would you defer that into?
That would, that would tie into the bottom swell somehow. That would, that's what kind of the assignment was, I think.
That's, that's something we certainly can take care of, just putting a diversion swell above the parking area.
Yeah, that was, I think that was quite clear in our instructions, but you know, maybe I don't mention some.
I mean, it's referenced in the attorney's letter, so I mean, the message got that far.
That's something we can do. And if you'd like me to share the screen, I'm happy to share the screen. Unfortunately, it's disabled right now on your end.
Okay, okay, so I think we're close. Are those contours, are they just off a USGS map or they field?
They're off of the USGS and New York State DOT mapping. There, and if you, and I did actually go out to the site just to, because what we're just trying to get is general runoff patterns to make sure there wasn't any hiccups in the site. And if you do visit the site, it's pretty consistent with what's shown there.
Okay. If this is going to be the only plate for that job, maybe I think you should include just a cross section of the construction of the pad so that we at least have it, you know. You know, that's not, you know. Eight inches of crusher run under, you know, you can have some sort of geofabric underneath it, so I'm just.
Yeah, I think that's noted in the.
You know, just a quick detail on the side with.
Yeah, we can do that.
Then I think we're in pretty good shape. The, some information submitted on signage, I didn't have the real opportunity to look at that, which just basically said, no overnight stays or that.
No overnight parking.
Yeah.
They're also proposing to put a gate out.
Yeah, yeah. That was consistent with what we asked. I don't think.
A sign up there. Where is the proposed location for the gate? In front of, at the entrance to the parking lot or somewhere else?
At the entrance to the parking lot. I believe the adjoining property owner was requested a thought about putting a gate in because signage often does not work since my client isn't there 24/7. So, we thought putting both the sign and the gate would, you know, hopefully eliminate the overnight parking for non-customers.
I think that some of the commenters were afraid of like this renegade parkers, you know, they just come up in there and beach overnight without even driving or taking services from the Wishy Wash just to get a place to sleep, which I think is.
Correct.
That does happen, so I mean, I guess they're, that's a, it's a good thing that you're willing to do that.
Yep.
So, they're proposing 14 weight pine trees, four feet tall. Okay, so take a look at that and see if you guys are okay with that. That was one of the things you requested as well.
Fast forward trees.
And I believe Mr. Steenberg's letter addresses the reason why they chose the four foot high trees because they're, they grow an average of three feet annually, as his letter says, and the four feet size is because there's a greater likelihood that the trees are going to survive with the initial plantings.
Okay. If anybody, any of the board members have some initial comments, I think it's, you know, we, like I say, we just got this. I don't see us having a lot of other comments other than relocating or not relocating, but providing the up gradient swell. If you can get that detail to us again 10 days before the next meeting, I think we'll be able to formulate a resolution for that.
I think the one thing that just be aware of, if you're adding that up gradient swell, make sure your acreage of disturbances updated to reflect whatever that comes out to be, because you're getting kind of close to the one acre mark, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, we'll make sure that, you know, we keep the swell right along the edge of the parking area. So, I think, I think my disturbance area, I went a little bit outside figuring a little bit of gradings, but we'll make sure that we update that accordingly.
Do you guys want to watch since the engineer is here, do you want to watch through the chat?
It was all done on a computer, so it's just like, we don't really know what software to use, but.
HydroCAD. Explain it to us, I guess it would help. I'm not familiar with the help of this software. Ready for her? Will you want to walk, pick him to walk us through and you can make sure he's.
We, it's, I use HydroCAD exclusively for all the storm water management. I've been using it for almost 30 years now. I find it's the best program for storm water runoff in TR55. Really, what we did is, you know, analyze the change in the runoff curve numbers between the existing soils, which actually are very poorly drained. And there isn't a huge difference in the runoff curve number between the existing soils and the crusher on parking lot. What's the crusher on parking lot conservatively with a, the same as you would do a paved parking lot so that when it gets compacted and tight, we're not, we're not taking any infiltration into that. And to basically, you know, just ran the numbers for both the 10 and 100 year storm events for a four inch rainfall within 24 hours and a 5.7 inch rainfall within 24 hours and verified that the swell that we had down gradient of the parking area will handle those runoff volumes. And if you look on the left-hand side, you can see the, where we showed the, the actual elevation of storm water and the swell that'll be created and really you're only looking at a few inches of water in that two foot wide swell with the creation, with, with the runoff for the 10-year storm and is slightly more for the 100-year storm. And then we went further downstream and you'll see that reach for the culvert underneath the parking area, the 18-inch HD culvert. And analyze that as well in the HydroCAD software to make sure it was capable of handling the additional flows.
I had a question. What is the drainage area that you use in these calculations? Is it extend up, you know, up off the property, up on the hill?
We actually, and it's interesting that you asked for the up drainage swell. For the, for the swell that's down gradient of the parking area, we just use the parking area. And we were assuming that we'll be doing, that we'll be getting some attenuation. And I can certainly add up gradient of the parking area into that if we're going to do that divergence well around and into that 18-inch culvert. We'll analyze that to make sure that that can handle the additional flows from that upper, upper one, but that wasn't included at this time.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the, the analysis is. Okay, so, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the, the analysis is, is toward the runoff of the parking area and not including any tributary, upstream tributary areas where most of the water is going to come from.
It's not including the upstream tributaries now.
Well, I think that's kind of an error, don't you think?
For the culvert, yes. For the swell that's below gray, below the parking lot, it wouldn't be, but for the, for the, for the culvert, we'll make sure that it can handle that.
Yeah, because all the, all the water off that hill is going to end up in that culvert. You, you might have five square miles of drainage area up that way or two square miles or something, you know?
Yeah, we'll be taking, we'll take a look at that.
All right, let's, let's, uh, make sure we got that done there.
Is that of an existing culvert or is that what you're proposing?
That's an existing culvert.
It just conveys it along the north side of Route 20 or?
Yeah, it's, it's in the roadside ditch.
Okay, so that water just pools against Route 20. It's, it's not conveyed under Route 20 to the south and then, and then.
No, no, it actually goes into the roadside ditch along Route 20, um, and conveyed west, uh, along.
There's a culvert that goes underneath the 20 somewhere, isn't there?
Well, yeah, just east of that, there's that other stream that comes down.
All right, so yeah, yeah, take a look at the entire drainage area. Is that really, you know, what you need to do, I think.
Right, yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at that for the, uh, 10-year storm event, which is typically what would be done for the design of any, uh, closed drainage systems.
Okay, okay. We have another, another board member would like to make a comment.
Brad, this has been Hoffman. Hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, I mean, I would say the biggest thing that you're talking about right now is you've got sheet flow across a, I don't know how wide this parking lot is, but say it's what, 90 feet, 100 feet. You're now taking that sheet flow for that 90 feet concentrated into the swell. So that swell has to be designed for all the flow up above it. You're just not keeping the same drainage pattern. So I think that's what the board members are concerned with. The other thing is, uh, you know, the, the HydroCAD counts just for the, the post-condition. I didn't see any pre-conditions here and, uh, where your timing, how you got your time of concentration and where your design points were. You know, that would be helpful to verify that the length and the patterns are correct. But I, I, I will say that I, I do agree that with, you know, the soils and the, the grass upland, shrub or whatever, that's probably a, uh, drawn a blank on the note, the, uh, the CN number of like 78 or something. And if you can design the swell for a CN number of 98 for the, the stone parking lot, that's greater. If it works for 98, it will work for the pre-conditions. But we need to have the pre-conditions so we, we know what the, the base flow is.
Yeah, we, we ended up, uh, we didn't do an existing condition because we're disturbing less than an acre. So we're not really comparing the existing to the proposed runoff rates. So we usually don't. But what I'll do is we'll break out the, um, we'll provide a, a very detailed analysis of the upstream drainage shed so that you can see what's happening there and, and at least give you an idea, um, with, because the swell is new, the swell is being designed for the, for the full, uh, parking lot itself. And, um, we don't, you know, we don't anticipate any issue with the swell. Um, really the biggest issue, especially if I, um, create that drainage, uh, the, the, the diversion ditch around the upper end of the parking lot will be, the focus will be on that culvert at the downstream side. Um, I don't, again, I don't anticipate, uh, a huge increase in the, in the runoff to that culvert. I just want to make sure that the culvert can handle the additional runoff.
Yeah, and that's where I guess I would disagree that, that if you were keeping the drainage patterns the same, I would agree with you. But because you're concentrating that flow now, it's going to see increased flows from previous flows.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna see increased flows. It's gonna see a quicker time of concentration. Um, which actually, which may end up, uh, helping us out a little bit because what's going to end up happening is on that parking area, you're going to get a, a quicker runoff, um, which would have, uh, been more attenuated and possibly concentrated with the upstream flows. So we'll have to, with the times of concentration, um, we'll have to see how, you know, the, the, the peak, peak rates, uh, compare at that culvert.
The only other thing I would say is, is that a DOT culvert or a county culvert? The 20th DOT, have they reviewed this? Make sure they're okay with the culvert size.
Are you, are you changing the culvert size at, down below or are you changing the culvert size up above?
We're, we're not changing any culvert sizes.
Oh, that's not a proposed holder?
Existing culverts.
Okay, so then as long as that, as, yeah, I thought it was a new culvert.
Well, we'll get you more information for the next meeting.
Yeah, if you can get that, uh, in, in a timely fashion for us. Uh, so we had an opportunity to review it. The next meeting, we may be able to make some progress as far as, you know, come into a conclusion. So.
Certainly.
Okay.
Are the, are the signage locations noted on that site, plenty where you're?
Something I added to my notes, uh, to, to add those signage locations and the locations of the gate as well.
Yeah, basically if you can kind of improve that map a little bit. I know it's the first, you know, your first attempt at it, but you know, would be really good. Okay.
The other thing is the cross-section of the parking lot. How much of the crusher run and the fabric?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to mo, um, I'll make a motion to table the special use, uh, permit application for spiral Kaigas for accessory parking until our next meeting, which is June 17th. Summertime. Yes. 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 Our, our next, uh, topic under the, uh, old business would be the Cassell Group LLC seeking a special use permit upon, uh, Mariville Scotch Road, Scotch Church Road. So believe we have, what do we have left? Move to the front of the class. Such good comments are promoted. Those are testaments, your bill counts. Okay. It's our newest board member. Approaches the table. Okay, our, our next, oh, under old business is the Cassell Group. I don't know, is Mr. Cassell around tonight?
On tonight, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I guess you can give us an update. I assume you've got everything straightened out with the health department and you're ready to go.
Oh yeah, it's looking, everything's looking good. In fact, uh, I dropped off the, uh, application to your guy's office today. So you guys have a copy of the health application um, that we put together for your guys' records.
How do you see the timing of the, the health, uh, reviews? Just really a protracted review or?
Uh, it's, it seems like it's going pretty quick. We have all our paperwork in with those. I mean, I'm hoping by fall time, we should be able to get the, uh, the okay to move forward on that.
Great, that would be very good.
So we continue to table this until, or we can, we can, or we can go up and do our, okay.
So the last, the last time we met, the opening close public hearing, there was no comments. Mr. Cassell's gonna use, uh, gonna, going to make use of the resolution that we prepared to show the Department of Health, there's support for the project. And you'll see that we added conditions as well, um, just before Dale would be issuing the certificate of occupancy. So we're sure we have everything. So if, if you prefer, I'd be happy to read the resolution into the record. Or if one of you would like to do it as signed.
Can the people on the phone here, Teresa, got well enough? Mr. Cassell, can you hear what Teresa was saying?
Uh, I'm sorry, say that again.
That kind of answers the question. You're wondering how well you could hear us.
Um, I, I could hear the, the, the group. I couldn't hear, uh, the town attorney before that too well.
So Teresa, you either have to move over here or we have to.
But every, everyone else I seen.
The town attorney has, has, uh, prepared a, a town of Dwyer Plainboard Resolution uh, in which we, uh, basically resolved the, uh, approved the special use permit. Uh, Mike Harris will read this. It's a little bit lengthy, but I think it's important that this is read into the record because we're, we're going to act on that. So.
Mike can read that.
Unless you want to, Joe.
No.
Whereas the Cassell Group LLC applied for a special use permit for a senior assisted living facility at an existing group home owned and formerly operated by ARC located at 1485 Mariville Scotch Church Road on SBL number 25 dot 00 dash 2 dash 1 dot 311. Located within the R2 zoning district in the town of Wainford. Whereas the application for a special use permit is made under section 3.43, section 8.4, subsection 1, and section 14.6.2 of the town of Wainford zoning ordinance on December 10th, 2020. Whereas the building inspector of the town had determined that the assisted living facility is allowed in the R2 zoning district on issuance of special use permit. Whereas the town planning board determined pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act proposed reuse of the property as an assisted living facility was a type-two action as a property was previously used for a similar purpose and no change, changes are proposed to the exterior of the facility beyond maintenance and repair. Whereas the town planning board reviewed the application, asked questions, requested different, additional information concerning the sufficiency of the septic system and the water supply system, both of which are private and onsite systems. And the applicant provided information concerning the water sewer, showing how the original systems had been approved by Schenectady County Department of Environmental Health Sewer and the New York State Department of Health Water. Whereas the applicant provided its business plan and numerous updates to the town planning board on the status of the application being submitted to the New York, New York State Department of Health for approval of the assisted living facility. Whereas the complete application was referred to Schenectady County Planning pursuant to New York State General Municipal Law. And on April 13th, 2021, Schenectady County Planning recommended approval subject to a condition requiring the approval of the New York State Department of Health and the Schenectady County Department of Environmental Health. Whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held on April 15th, 2021 at the regular scheduled planning board meeting and no one commented on the project. Now therefore, it resolves, the town planning board hereby approves the application seeking a special use permit for the operation of a senior assisted living facility at 1485 Mariville Scotch Church Road where the existing owner, ARC, operated a group home for many years, subject to the following three conditions. New York State Department of Health approvals for the operation of the assisted living facility shall be provided to the town of Wainford Building Inspector prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the, for the assisted living facility. And two, Schenectady County Department of Environmental Health approvals for the operation of the sewage disposal system for the assisted living facility shall be provided to the town of Wainford Building Inspector prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the assisted living facility. And number three, any necessary approvals for the operation of the potable water system should be provided to the town of Wainford Building Inspector prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the assisted living facility. And I should have asked, could you refer that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. I didn't ask though, five minutes ago.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Any edits? Changes, additions?
No, I, I think that's great. I, and I think if we have that, um, it'll help speed up the Department of Health application even more with that, showing that we went through this process. This is good.
So I make a motion to approve this resolution. Do we have to give a number, Teresa, or is that added later? Okay, sorry. Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll give my yes in there too.
Mr. Cassell, we wish you, uh, the best of luck, uh, expeditionist, uh, review time with the Department of Health and I, I think, uh, you work well with us and we thank you for your cooperation and diligence to give us what we needed and you know, everything went well. So congratulations.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys more down, down the line. This is great.
So Dale, you'll let us know when this issue is seen, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep you guys posted and I'll, I'd be able to get a copy of that too at some point, right?
Yeah.
That resolution?
You'll get an official copy if you stop by. You can just stop by.
Okay, I can stop by? Great, thank you guys very much.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to old business for the third time. Paul Germetti. Three lots, major subdivision on, uh, McGuire School Road. And Paul, I think the last time we were missing some referrals and uh, you, oh, there's something and I guess we got that and I think we have what we need at this point. Perhaps.
The only question is, has the 30 days left on the agency?
There didn't appear to be any stumbling blocks with the referrals on this.
Yeah, the only thing the county planning said was county department.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's a pretty standard thing. You're going to have to get a, a, access to them for your driveways. All right, since we have everything, we can make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Usually Elizabeth is here.
Yeah.
So I think the first thing you would do is now you can confirm that your lead agency and determine whether you want to issue a negative declaration on this, uh, which you need to do before you call for the public hearing. So did, was the same.
Looks like it. I'm, I'm looking at the third to last page of our package. The print is really small.
Mike's becoming our great orator. So that's great.
That's great, Joe. So the town, I'm gonna read the determination of significance for the seeker. So the town of Duaneburg Planning Board has completed an environmental assessment of the proposed major subdivision. The project's environmental impacts have been evaluated in accordance with the seeker full environmental assessment form part two. Identification of potential project impacts. None of the potential project impacts have been identified as moderate to large. Proposed major subdivision consists of three lots. Lot number one consists of two point three five acres. Lot number two has an existing single family dwelling and is two point five four acres. Lot number three will consist of seven point seven one acres. The proposal is consistent with a town comprehensive plan and compliant with the zoning ordinance for the R two agricultural residential zoning districts. It is anticipated that single family dwellings may be built in the future on lots one and three and will be consistent with the existing community character with no aesthetic impacts anticipated. The proposed act will not have an impact on the environmental characteristics that would cause the establishment of a critical environmental area. The proposed act will have no impact or any adverse change to the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway. Proposed action will have little to no increase in energy usage. Any outdoor lining is for residential purposes. Any noise or odors associated with construction activities will be temporary. Proposed action will require the drilling of private wells and private septic systems, which will require approval from the New York State Department of Health. Is anticipated minimal disturbance of soil for construction will be. Required temporary soil erosion control measure to be installed and maintained during any future construction activities. Should there be any potential impacts to federal or state wetland resources? US Army Corps of Engineers or New York State DC will be contacted to determine if any permits or approval are required. Permits and or approvals will be secured prior to any work occurring which we can which could impact wetland resources. The site has been identified as having long northern lawn here fast. Alter removal activities must occur between October thirty first and March thirty first. If these days cannot be accommodated, onsite assessment by the DC staff may be required. The Howard homestead is approximately two thousand feet from the site because construction is anticipated. Then shippo may wish to evaluate for any possible direct or indirect impacts. The proposed subdivision is not in a hundred year floodplain or mediation site. This act will not result in any impacts to agricultural resources. Although the parcels are surrounded by Schenectady County agricultural districts and are subject to orders and noises and noise associated with farming activities. Therefore, based on this information, the planning board has determined that the proposed major subdivision will not have any significant adverse impacts on the environment. And negative declarations made for purposes of Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law. That's a motion I would like to propose. The declaration. Yes. 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 Yes.
We got that part. Now we can schedule a public hearing, okay? We have all the information we need to schedule a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Paul Germetti three lot subdivision. At our next scheduled Duane'sburg Planning Board meeting on. June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Yes. 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 Yes.
I don't know if there's any audience, Mr. Germetti or Mr. Blackstone, are you there?
Mark Blackstone is here and I thank you for your help in moving this thing towards approval.
Good, Mark. Well, thanks for getting all the stuff for us and, you know.
I think we touch base next month.
I think we kept you on schedule and I think everything's gonna work out well for you, so.
Great.
We'll have the. You know, hopefully things will go well, so.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is new business. We've got a special use permit application submitted by William Green. Located at one oh nine six six Duane'sburg Road. So is there a representative of William Green here?
There is. My name is Joseph Alano. I'm an attorney in Schenectady. And with me is William Green. And farmer of the town of Duane'sburg.
Okay, good. If you could, you know. Summarize your proposal in as much detail as you'd like for us.
Absolutely. Mr. Green is seeking a special use permit allowing the operation of a farm metering. Under local law number five of two thousand and seventeen, which is permitting agritourism. He is, him and his wife Kimberly are the owner occupants of ten nine sixty-six Duane'sburg Road. Which is Route seven. He has about sixty-eight acres with about just over a thousand feet of frontage on Route seven. The lot has a max depth of eighteen hundred and fifteen feet. It's currently improved with a couple of structures, the applicant's house, a detached garage, some agricultural buildings. And a gravel driveway, but the most important feature that we're gonna be focusing on tonight is there. And there is a detached, single-use agricultural outbuilding on the property. It is sixteen feet by approximately twenty-six feet, stick-built wood construction. It's currently being used in his farm operation, which is a honeybee farm. It's an apiary. The current use is as his residence, but also as a commercial beekeeping facility. He harvests honey and he bottles it for sale. But as important for the community and the environment as these pollinators are. Unfortunately, there's only so much profit that can be made from the harvesting of honey in its natural state. So to create more income, but also maintain. The agricultural nature of this Duane'sburg farm. He is looking to add to his premises. Under the agritourism law, a farm metering. A metering is simply a honey wine product. It's fermented. It's under fourteen percent alcohol. And he's looking to expand on not only his own use of the honey he produces. But to purchase raw honey from other New York farmers to ferment and bottle on premises. At this point, he is not looking for an expanded use that could disrupt. The town of Duane'sburg. He is not looking to put in a tasting room signage. He's not expecting on-premises sales, even in a package-to-go setting. He's looking strictly to be a manufacturer. Under the State Liquor Authority guidelines. He is looking to sell his product at farmers markets, state and county fairs. To finer wine and liquor stores, as well as local bars and taverns. It's an opportunity to expand on a current and existing use. And to allow for the betterment of the community. Without really impacting the surrounding area at all. All of the operations. Other than the actual bees and the intentionally planted wildflowers on the premises. Are going to be contained within that sixteen by twenty-six foot building, which is surrounded by crushed stone pads on all sides. In some of the photos that have been sent to the town planning board. You can see the exterior of the ag building. You can see the interior of it and also in the background of some of those exterior photos. You can see a sample of some of the hives that are already set up and producing honey. As well as the storage of the hives that are going to be set up with a new brood, coincidentally, that just showed up today. All of the facilities to do this are already on premises. There is a well, you know, it produces six gallons of water per minute for over two hours. We have a septic system. Any of the waste that is gonna be generated by this production facility. Can be treated on premises with a septic system. It's all natural. It's all simple sugars to just be broken down. There are no surrounding property improvements. If you look at the aerial. With the amount of frontage and acreage that he has around the building. The use is not impacting any of the neighbors. And I'm gonna go so far as to say the location in the grade, the location of the house. In relation to the ag building and the grade of the property going away from the road. Essentially, the additional use is going to be completely hidden from the public in general. We believe that this is a low-impact. Proposal that is going to enhance the agricultural use of an existing farm. Ultimately, it also creates tax dollar revenues. Through the use of the creation of an alcoholic beverage. We already have a federal permit. We have a pending state application. And now we are coming to the town for our town approvals. There is going to be essentially no additional impact or clearing of the soil. You know, we don't have a a SWIP issue here. We're just using what's already present.
Her first question is. If we're applying under local law for agritourism, if there's no people going there. If that's okay?
They usually start small.
Okay. You can have a.
A metering is allowed under the agritourism. Essentially, it's a honey winery as opposed to using grapes. It's simply a honey product. If you start small, we're looking for a first annual batch of fifteen hundred gallons. Done in twenty gallon installments. We'll be bottling in three hundred and seventy-five mil and seven hundred and fifty mil bottles. Obviously, once we have a demand created. We could be coming back to this board. Hopefully in a few years to maybe expand. But at this point, this is a a no signage use. Essentially just enhancing an agricultural product already being produced in your town on this parcel. I wish that they had some here, but until we get our state licensing done. We can't take any off premises to share, but absolutely, please. To have you.
Okay, from a seeker standpoint, this really qualifies as a type-two action. It's construction or expansion of a primary or accessory apartment. Non-residential structure facility and agricultural facility. Involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning. Or a use variance consistent with local land use controls. So so tonight, if you want to, you could. Make a determination that it's a type-two action under seeker and then proceed to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
I think that's a good idea. Is anybody on the board have any comments or questions or?
The only the only thing I I had written there talking was I actually wanna know what's on the wastewater. I know what the batch bar, which I think the volume is quite a bit higher. We had a concern with the septic system. This is pretty low volume. I I guess the only the the opinion you provide on the septic system being able to handle it. Is that a an opinion you've got from a professional of some sort to assess that?
We have not. The thing is, primarily, any of the fluid going into the bottles isn't going to end up in the system at all. Essentially, any of the water usage is simply gonna be the cleaning of, you know, natural honey waste and. Cleaning the equipment used in the honey house. The same kind of products that would be going into the septic system from. Beekeeping in general, which has been happening on the property for years. Hasn't prevent, hasn't caused any problems to this point. The additional water usage, anything that would be used, would be leaving the property instead.
I I think what I I'm thinking about it, I hope this never happens. You have a a batch called bat. Are you gonna dump it, dump it on the septic and is that kind of a purchase or are you, would you dispose of it on another way?
Well, the thing is, we could dispose it in another way, but considering the batches are only twenty gallons at a time. It's it's very minimal.
Okay, yeah, so it's small. Okay. If your operation could bigger, we might review that further.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we we are starting small. A lot of the local craft beverages start in, you know, on farms. I know Wolf Hollow started in an ag building, if you're familiar with their product. I'm certainly familiar with their product over in Glenville. Held a bit of weed works, another which we would hope to eventually, you know, develop. They started on premises before they went larger. You know, I would love to look into the future and think that this is going to be huge, but we have to start. At square one, doing very small micro batches. And a small micro farming, a farm metering.
Just just a a couple of questions. Are you gonna have any kind of signage out there or just?
Not at this time. No, this is a manufacturing facility. We are going to be looking at some point. Multiple years down the road to develop that use and then we would come back to you for signage and the tasting room. But under the need law that was passed by the legislature and signed by Governor Como. They allow us to have up to five. Alternate locations to have tasting rooms, not even necessarily on the farm. So we haven't even made the determination that the manufacturing facility in a tasting room would even necessarily be on the same premises. I don't know if there will be a need for signage at any point. I simply don't have a crystal ball.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, with that, with that information base, I think. I think the board's in a position to make a a motion to declare this a type-two seeker action. Teresa, do we need some more words other than that?
No, no, that's fine.
The town of Duane'sburg Planning Board determines that this is a type-two seeker action, which requires no further review. And I know the motion would be for that, so we'll need to approve that.
And set the public hearing.
We'll set the public hearing. We did it in the same motion?
Yeah.
Okay, and in that same motion, we will set the public hearing for William Green's proposal on June seventeenth at our next meeting. That's the that's the motion.
One second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, good luck. We'll see you next month and hopefully this will be a great thing for the town.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Before you head off, do you have any questions for us? Anything you need to know?
I I mean, I I I think I think that we covered it. We we did submit additional documentation. Hopefully it did find its way into. Your folders. We did reach out to New York State Historic and Cultural Preservation. And we received, we went through their consultation process, found a negative finding. There was none. We have, we ended up doing a title search for over a hundred years to make sure that there were no alcohol restrictions. Or covenants in any of the past deeds. There's been nothing. We've tried to be as thorough in our initial submission as possible. But hopefully make the job as easily, easy as possible for the town planning board.
Yeah, I I I think that a compliment from the board is there, too, because you did do a a lot of due diligence preparing this, which makes our job. A lot less strenuous.
Good presentation. Hit all hit all the high points.
Yeah, very good, very, very good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. See you next month.
I'll see you next month.
Okay, next item on the agenda is sketch plan review. Dennis Weekly, located at one fifty-six Hillside Drive, seeks a minor subdivision. So is Dennis a representative available to, uh?
Yeah, I did, I'm on the phone, Dennis.
Dennis, why don't you run us through what you're proposing? This is the sketch plan review, which is the first step, so, uh. See what you got and we'll see what you need, okay?
I'm going to settle in a state. There is a garage on one side of the road and a house on the opposite side of the road. I want to own the house and my brother wants the garage. Um, I don't know what else to say about it, you know?
You're proposing to convey land in this action? I mean.
I just put in the land. It's two brothers.
I mean, there's.
Opposite sides of the road already. They already got it.
There's a road that splits the property now.
It's under a single ownership and you can just divide it amongst the two brothers.
Right.
So, we'll just take this care.
Yeah.
So what, why, Tracy says, especially because it's a garage, it's not a house?
Yeah, that was my question, but that's up to them. You don't think they need it? Because it's a big garage and not a house?
Right.
Does it exist?
But if the house is across the street right now, it goes right in the garage, right? So is that? Do you need to special use for it? It's a garage only on parcels by itself?
That was my question.
The property has been previously separate and then it's combined and not just asking to separate it again back again.
Yeah, was it previously separate?
Yeah, part of the narrative, yes.
Oh, okay, I missed that, sorry.
Yeah, the house used to be one fifty-six Hillside Road and, uh, where the garage is, I think was one seventy-two Hillside before.
Can you just want to break it back apart? Yeah, it seems reasonable. Yes, unless, unless it needs discussion.
We'll do this administratively.
I think, yeah.
Proposal sounds pretty straightforward to the board and I think we'd like to do this, uh. Administratively, it's possible. Yeah. And, uh, so. Mike's got the, the paperwork. I guess he'll have to read it last time. I think we're, we're going to try to make this a, uh, pretty clear cut for you. Uh, I don't see any outstanding issues that would, would arise from you just. You know, putting the property back like it used to be years ago and. There shouldn't be any environmental issues. It's the same piece of property. No new buildings proposed. No, just the garage, you know, it was there forever, so.
Okay, so for, uh, Dennis Weekly, I make the motion. That the planning board determines it's proposed, uh, I guess, is it a lot, just a subdivision, is it a minor subdivision?
It's a, it's a, uh.
It is a minor subdivision, yeah.
Because you're going to have two lots or you have one.
Okay, but the, the minor subdivision, uh, action neither creates nor increases any significant planning issues with respect to the existing or potential future use of any involved parcels. Uh, the planning board declares proposed action to be further exempt from any further subdivision review pursuant to this article. And refers the application to the code enforcement officer Dale to complete administration of the same.
Hey, Dennis, it looks like you're good to go. Uh, we're going to vote on this, okay?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, Dennis, looks like you're good to go. You just meet with Dale. Slam dunk for you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
You guys.
Good job.
You guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you too. Next item under sketch plan review is Rita Weaver, forty-eight.
I'm here.
Line Drive. So Rita, can you just tell us what you're proposing to do?
Okay, um, this is property that we bought from Jim Brightencine last year. It's a nine point four-nine acre lot. Currently, my daughter, and you can see it from here, uh. Facing the property from Skyline Drive on the right, our daughter is building a house. At some point, we would like to build a house. So we want to subdivide the property and the line that's drawn on here is a natural stone wall that was probably a property marker at some point. Um, so I think it comes out to be she has like five acres and we have like four point four-nine acres. So we just want to subdivide at some point to build.
Can, is the, the blue forty-eight by sixty, is that the house your daughter's building or is your?
No, that's. Go ahead. I'm sorry, this is Carl. Uh, that's just a rough sketch I put there and the size of the house we may build.
That, that's a future possible and, and your daughter is building a house where, to the right of that?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I remember just buildings on this lot now?
No, no, well, just the house that she's starting.
Okay.
There, uh, setbacks proposed on this plan. Make sure that there's no encroachments.
Dale, does it need the zoning requirements?
It needs to be two hundred foot width. Block depth.
So that's, yes.
We don't, we don't know. Yeah. Yeah. The geometry of that, that triangular lot is a little, a little bit, you know, challenging. Uh, it, we, we need to assure that there's proper setbacks for the building and.
I made some measurements with a wheel.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's not exact, but.
Because you're going to, you're going to need setbacks. You have the, the outer ones now, but you're going to need setbacks from your daughters. You know, that edge of your daughter's lot.
We did that too.
We did that. That's about, um, a hundred feet.
Okay.
From this, this, where the, the dots, the lines are. That's a natural stone wall. So from there to where we have the proposed building is a hundred feet.
Okay.
And then the, the same on the, uh, from your daughter's house from her septic and all that, that needs to set back.
Yep, yep, yep.
And.
This was the survey that, um, uh, Ken and Joanne, Joanne Crumb's office did for the bank when she started building her house.
Okay.
Tim, do you want to give a survey of what you want? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. You got enough separation from the wells, something. Except to the air.
And there's no requirement for well from a, a road? Is there a setback for a road?
Maybe you have to get a highway permit, you know, cut permit.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. trailer straightaway and it's old there. It's on the backside of the triangle.
We're calling it Weaver Island.
Those are people.
So, so someone can refer to Dale, but it's just a problem when you do your, you come back to us, is that?
There shouldn't be.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds disexpensive. From the plot we're looking at, it's so small, it makes it look small.
Yeah.
Old there, which. Yeah, I can see the eighty foot on both sides and it's bigger than the other side, so they just cut the, the rest out of it. Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think, uh, there's some good news. I think the board, uh. Mike will read what we believe is going to be a, uh. Our position on this.
So I make a motion for, uh, Rita Weaver, uh, minor subdivision. Planning board determines that the proposed minor subdivision action neither creates nor increases any significant planning issues with respect to the existing or potential future use of any involved parcels. Planning board declares proposed action to be further exempt from any further subdivision review pursuant to this article. And refers the applicant, application to the code enforcement officer to complete administration of the same. A second. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Thanks, Dale.
Okay, Rita, uh, and Weaver's, you're set to go. You'll have to interact with Dale.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
All in Lance Mann is tomorrow.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations.
Bill, please.
We've got to get a character reference.
I'll make your. Window reference.
Yeah, there you go. Well, we have a.
Um, do we need to do the minutes to do that before I cancel out?
I do have.
Yeah, we have another. An item added to the agenda under sketch plan review.
I missed that.
It's not on here.
Did he get it in ten days?
It's for a Roger Tidball.
That's why you're making up.
Two hundred and eighty Raymond's Corners Road seeks a minor subdivision.
No.
So.
Lot line.
Oh, a lot line. So it's minor, oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
So what I'm doing, the blue, the, in the blue is a parcel. I live on. I want to, and I own the parcel next to it on the right. There's a house on both parcels. I want to add eighteen, add eighteen feet of blue parcel. Taking away from parcel on the right and put a driveway. Long garage. Septic, only possible thing is that I have a plan where. Think about will be the septic for the house on the right. That's an upper right hand corner.
And setback to the house, it's okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in a, it's in a, uh, in well, so setbacks a lot of us. Well, yeah, the house, the house on the house, uh, parcel right as far as the right.
Where's the well set up?
The house on the left, next to the road. The house on the right is actually on the right-hand side where it goes up the road. But the, that's out.
Where's the driveway?
The driveway, the, the marked in part.
Yeah.
The, that's the driveway that's along, alongside the garage.
Very detailed that.
No.
Yeah, no.
Did you use spray on?
So Dale, does it need to be a requirement for handling?
It does.
So we're referring this one too?
Yeah. Roger wasn't standing back. Make sure. You got it. Okay, I think, uh. Can you read, still read, Mike?
No, I'm done.
He's got it. He's got a spare stutter in his breath.
Sorry, the planning, the planning board determines that the proposed lot line adjustment, uh, action neither creates nor increases any significant planning issue with respect to the existing or potential future use of any involved parcels. Uh, and then no additional lots to be created as a result of the lot line adjustment. The planning board declares proposed action to be further exempt from any further subdivision review pursuant to this article and refers the application to the code enforcement officer to complete administration of the same. I make this motion. Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Sorry Dale, you got to work.
Oh my God. Can't get away from the tail, you know? You got a lot of work to sign tonight. This is a bad night for Dale.
Before you approve minutes, I just had a question for the board. We had several, uh, months ago or two months ago, I think, talked about the solar lot, the event lot. Does anybody have any additional comments on either of those two lots?
No, we hashed out the event law the last time a little bit, right? There's some different numbers. I think that was. Go any further with it. Yeah, as long as the comments from last month were kind of, you know.
No problem.
We're all set. Okay, minutes approval from the April eighteenth meeting.
They're kind of long.
Fifteen.
We're a question.
I know. That's right. Learning, we're learning. Well, good job on the minutes, Melissa. Very comprehensive. Didn't even miss a lowercase J, so it's good.
To make sure we're. Oh, there it is. Okay, just wanted to make sure we had the attachment. I saw that said attachment.
This is a good meeting because we closed out a lot of stuff tonight, you know, which is nice to.
You want to make sure something to do next one? We'll just get three or four public hearings next month, right? Two? Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
The contact sheet in the back?
Yeah. So, all right. You're, you're the continuing author. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the draft copy of the April fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. Take of that. Uh, yes. Yes. Interesting. What about this? Yes.
Awful.
Standing there, wasn't there? That's what, are we? Yeah, we're four, right?
Yes.
And who was our, were you there?
I was there.
Okay.
I was waiting. I thought you were better at counting. I haven't missed one yet, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't get so much money back, see?
Why?
Why? Alright, listen, who hasn't made a motion? Make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Are you guys set?
Alright, go on.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Sanz, yeah. Mr. Sanz, does it sound better? Definitely work, yeah. Member Sanz.